All right, council and guests, got thumbs up from the, from Rob at the back. So we'll bring our meeting to order. Is there any declaration of interest regarding any item on today's agenda? Just occurred to me, I think I forgot to ask that on the council meeting portion, but I presume there wasn't. Okay, not seeing any, if one should arise during the course of meeting, of course, you can declare it at that time. Uh, there's no business arising from previous minutes. We have two delegations this morning, the first is for, from Marianna. Prestaco, did I, how close did I come with that one? All right, well, come on ahead, Marianna, and she's going to speak to council regarding concerns. Regarding speeding in the small hamlet of Banks, so good morning and welcome. Did, yeah, turn.
There you go. Excellent. Okay, wonderful. Good morning, everyone, thank you. Now, I want to, my name is Marianna Prestico. I'm here with my friends and family from the community of Banks. Like you said, it's the small little community at the top of the Blue Mountain Resort. Right at Grey Road 119 and the fourth line. So as I speak with you today, I want to acknowledge our mayor of Blue Mountain, who recommended that we come here to speak to you about this ongoing issue. So thank you for giving us this opportunity. So if we can turn over to the slides that we have prepared for this presentation. And we are now on slide number two, please. And next slide, please. Thank you. So this is the community of the banks, so, and I want to get your attention to the current state of the posted speed limit where we have along the Grey Road 119. So I done some creative writing here and you can see that 119 goes from the bottom of the first roundabout around the scenic caves. And we have that posted speed that fluctuates between fifty to thirty to then fifty kilometers an hour because we have quite a few loops going around scenic caves. When you hit the line of the four, of the third line, and then between the third and the fifth line, the posted speed is currently at sixty kilometers. Uh, sorry, between the third and the fifth, my apologies. The third and the fifth line, the posted speed is seventy kilometers an hour. And then once you pass Banks, uh, above the fifth line, the speed gets reduced to sixty kilometers an hour and it takes you all the way through the farming land and the rural neighborhood, all the way to the, to Ravenna store. And then the posted speed changes again. So our community of Banks, where we have the residential area and our residents living on both sides of the 118th and the fourth line, the posted speed is currently seventy kilometers. So this is right between the third and the fifth line. So right on the fourth line on the corner, and we have the second house on that corner. So we have the stop sign, but unfortunately, as the drivers speed through this, they do not obey the stop sign. They just speed through it without doing a full stop. So next slide, please, so this is the current state.
Yeah, good morning, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Terry Samcu, and I'd like to continue. What we want, we ask you to consider reducing the posted speed to forty kilometer per hour. I will definitely take time to shift drivers' behavior, but it's the first step in taking proactive action. Once the posted speed is reduced, we ask to add other safety intervention to curb the speeding. Install the electronic radar sign that indicate the vehicle's speed to the driver. Install warning sign of the new posted speed limit. Replace the speed limit sign with oversized speed limit sign to the east and west or 119. We also continue to raise the ongoing issue with the OPP and ask install the speed cameras for increased enforcement, enhance enforcement of posted speed limit by OPP.
Now on the next slide, please. So why we want this? Uh, so why is number one to? We ask you because we have witnessed the changes that the posted speed makes on every day for the drivers' behaviors in our neighborhood communities. Kimberly and Eugenia has recently had the speed reduction and we see the impact that it makes for the, for folks who live and visit the area. So you still get occasional drivers, no matter what, who seem to be in Russia, no matter what, they seem to be getting over a hundred. But even if that is the case, and you see those occasional drivers, when the posted speed is at forty kilometers an hour, they will not be speeding over a hundred, that gets unnoticed. But when the posted speed is seventy, that there is closer gap to go over that speed. So right now, unfortunately, what we see as residents of Bank is just an accident waiting to happen. We have seen so many accidents already that happen in our community. We see the cars ending up in a ditch in our, in our property. At the end of the line, at the front of the line, we see it on every corner of the, especially in the winter when the conditions are slippery. I don't believe I have to explain to you, ladies and gentlemen, the danger of speeding and what it means. It is definitely the contributing factor to collisions. Some of the things why it makes the change and what it means to us on the quality of our life as named as the residents of Banks is that it is absolutely dangerous to all residents, especially those with kids. Like our son is here, so he can't walk to my next door neighbor on his own because I don't know whether the car is going to pay attention that he's walking. So I tend to walk him or holding his hands and ensure that I look back every few seconds to ensure that he gets to our neighbor safe to play soccer on his field, you know? The impact that it has on cyclists, the folks who want to walk or jog along the 119. We don't have the sidewalks like in the city, so you will use the main road for getting around. The impact that it has on animals, like we have to scrape off of the road, you know? The other thing is the distance in the community of Banks of the houses comparing to the farming land. So the distance of the driveway from the main road is relatively smaller to the house. So it's not like you're going through the woods and then you end up in your, in your property. You, you like, it's very close, it's between me and you, sorry, and that's my house, you know? The impact that it has on the school bus. So when we've met with our mayor and we talked about every morning and every end of school day, we have six buses, six school buses, picking up kids from our neighborhood, going to different schools through, in Blue Mountain, whether they go to Collingwood or different communities, different schools. But morning and end of day, we have six school buses full of kids. And then we see those drivers passing by and racing through like they're on a racetrack. It has an impact to our kids and the future. I can tell you the impact that it has on the noise when you're trying to enjoy the tranquility and the peace and quiet and the birds chirping and you hear the noise and in the supporting evidence that we have, you'll see the videos and the noise that it makes. So Canada has the road safety strategy for 2025. If you think about it, we're already middle of twenty-three. We're less than two years away to that. So we all have the responsibility to make the impact and the proactive changes. So that's why, sir, we're here in front of you and the council, why we want to make these changes and why we're asking you to consider reducing the speed limit in our community. Next slide, please. If you can play the video, so we've attached the four videos to help you see the impact that it makes, and this is from our property, just as we're speeding through. Thank you, next one, please. Next one, please. And one more. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. When, where we wanted, our ask is reasonable and we ask you to reduce posted speed between third and fifth lines, just both sides on the first, fourth line as Grey Road 119. Uh, when do we want it? Next slide, please, thank you. The reasonable timeline of the one to three months before the school year begin in September 2023. Ladies and gentlemen, the councils, on the behalf of all residents of Banks, myself as a teacher, as a media supervisor and a good citizen, I really would like to ask you to, to reduce the this speed limit to forty in our residential area. This is for us, for our kids, as you know, our kids is the future. This is the future doctors, teachers, counselors, and the one day they will pay us back for the, what, what we did for them. Thank you.
And our next slide. So we have attached the, the support from the community that we have. So like I said, we have our family and our friends here with us. We have collected two pages of signatures. There were way many more people who wanted to come and join us for the presentation. Unfortunately, because it's during the day and people work, not everyone is available. But we have collected way more signatures since then. Um, so this is one slide and then we have the next page as well. So we have surpassed the two pages now and we keep going. We, everyone speaks to the issue that it, that it is. We have contacted the OPP so many times, the OPP officers, they park their cars in my driveway and they're always able to catch those who speed. It is very ironic, but as you see them speeding through and they, there was one gentleman who tried to hide in my driveway. Thank you, man, wrong driveway to hide because you're speeding through 145 and the OPP officer was not able to catch up with him. So then he decided to hide in my driveway and things like, oh, I don't think I expect any visitors. Next, I know he's charged with a stunt driving. So there are all of these things that happened. We were able only to attach the four videos for this presentation, but I think you get the point. Just looking at those, people definitely don't go with seventy. You can see that. The club of Ford, Porsche or Ferrari or those fancy cars that they pass through, I appreciate you invested a lot in your fancy vehicle and you want to get it to the maximum of the speed. Just please not in my community. Or pay attention to kids playing their soccer and playing in the front yard. And this is not a racing field. So I appreciate your time, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate you giving us this opportunity to speak with you. We also have our neighbors, if you just say a few words.
I don't know, I don't want to take too much of your time. I know we're allotted ten minutes and I'm basically going to say very much the same things that Marianna has said, but um, I'll just make a few points. Uh, Banks Corners, the fourth line, at Banks Corners, the fourth line and Highway 119 intersect. Both run along the highest point of the Niagara Escarpment. They are surrounded by forests and fields. For this and other reasons, the roads have very many different reasons, uh, uses. There's a lot of animals around Banks. It's a very, it's a rare night in the summer or in the fall when you come up and deer don't cross the road. And sometimes they come right out of the forest very quickly. So, uh, city drivers who are unfamiliar with animals might not be expecting this. Second thing is bicycles. It's one of the most popular spots of bicycles, I've been told, for the whole of Ontario because of scenic caves road and the road up from Ravenna to Banks. Sometimes on a weekend, there'll be twenty, thirty, forty bicycles in a group, but there's all through the week, there's one or two almost all the time. Third thing is farmers in their equipment. It's a great farming area, we're surrounded by farmers, they have to do their work. They have big machines that take up the whole road, they move slowly. And the while, uh, most people are very courteous and wait till there's a chance to pass, you see them sometimes being pushed, which is bothersome. Third thing is that it's a residential area. There's many more people living at Banks now than when we moved in years ago. And the third thing I can think has been mentioned is hikers. The Bruce Trail actually crosses, uh, Highway 119 just below the third line. So you always have hikers down there in the summer. So I just have one little story and I think you saw the video of it. The other day I was driving along the Highway 119 when I looked in my rearview mirror and saw a car coming up behind me like a ballistic missile. I quickly pulled over and ten Lamborghinis went tearing by, I'd say at a hundred and twenty kilometers an hour. I'm probably exaggerating, I tend to do that. But each one tailgating the one ahead. Highway 119 is a county road, not a race strip. We would like to see this, okay? And, uh, that's about it. Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
So thank you again, that concludes our presentation, but we are very happy to answer any questions you may have or provide any additional information you may need from us in order to see this change happen in a positive way. Um, we feel that we are very reasonable in our ask. We are asking only through the community of Banks. I appreciate that Grey Road 119 in the past had a speed limit of eighty kilometers and then it's been reduced to sixty. And then through the banks, it remains to be at seventy, which is very unfortunate. This is where we live, this is where kids play. Like I said, this is where the school buses pick up kids. There were many other videos that I wanted to supply, but unfortunately through privacy laws, it's as one car is passing through another and there is a bus, there is a school bus right behind the corner of the fourth line turning around. This is, I think, the example that we've talked with our mayor. And it's, like I said before, it's an accident waiting to happen and I'm really looking for something for us collectively to take ownership and to do a proactive step. We seem to be, as the community overall, doing a lot of reactive things. And I ask you and I plead to you to do a very positive proactive things before something tragic happens to the humans. So I ask for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Ann, and, and all the other speakers for your impassioned presentation. Thank you very much, your, your information has been heard very clearly. Counselor Matrasovs.
Thank you, through you, the warden, if there are no questions from council members, I, I would be prepared to put forth to my council colleagues a motion to receive, but to also to direct staff to bring back a report for further information. I, I, I have, as you know, I've, I've met, but I also live in the very southwest corner of the town of Blue Mountain. So I understand the rural traffic, um, because I use it as well. And as we all know, the scenic caves road, which we adopted as Gray County, is really the third and last option we want to indicate to people to go down to get to the base of the mountain due to the fact that it was created in, by standards that we, we would not create in this day and age. If we're driving from, from west to east in our town, there is a much more viable route to go down our lovely Grey Road two, onto our Grey Road forty to twenty-six and get to the base of the mountain. If you're going to Collingwood, the choice of route is to go down 119 again, which has much, uh, much less habitation, right? Right adjacent to it like in Banks. And, and, uh, so the, the speed is of concern. As a driver, I can contest that it is a confusing route to go from Ravenna sixty kilometers to a seventy and then down to a thirty, fifty, thirty, fifty. Um, it, 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 I try to drive it as if I've never been there before and, and it is not necessarily. I do think that it is worthy to hear a staff report, to hear more about that seventy kilometer stretch. The other day I was driving because I had to be at the top and yeah, I was driving the speed limit up a hill with a double line and somebody passed around me and I slowed down so worried that at the crest of the hill, if there had been another piece of traffic coming in the opposite direction, I would be part of the mess that was going to be at the top of the hill. So I, I would, I would move that if, if there is a second or two, to consider that we hear back further information from our staff about what might be done in that seventy kilometer stretch. Thank you.
Is there a second, or? Counselor McQueen? Any discussion on the motion? Counselor McQueen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, and certainly, uh, happy to second it. Other than I, I report to come back from stop, I know there was a time, I think, a few years back where the, I think there was a discussion to raise the speed on a certain section of that road or, or predict it was at one point when after it was reconstructed. So a report would be, would be warranted. The other comment I do have is where the videos were taken, do you have a, like, a nine-one-one number or where that part was taken, just because there's a stop sign in between, you said the third line and the fifth line and the fourth line is Banks stop sign, right? So when the videos were played, is that stopping at the stop sign and then hitting or like, or how whereabouts is that location on that section? So that, so those, so those vehicles that were recorded were taking off from the stop sign, heading west?
Yes.
Okay.
So just.
My apologies, so there were three videos, then the cars were going up towards the Blue Mountain and there was one, the truck was going down from the Blue Mountain towards Ravenna. Yep. And like I said, we have the second house from the stop sign. Just as I was sitting the other night, there was a car and it was at nine o'clock at night and the car is just zooming through and though they are not stopping. Right now, over the last couple of weeks, there was the beacon that flashes the stops, the stop sign. Now with the trees and the branches, not everyone is able to see it. So that's another thing because it's obstructing that view. And so then they, they just keep on driving, they don't even stop. But I can also sympathize and also to the mayor's point is that as you're driving through over a hundred and then you have a stop sign, it's really hard to stop. And then you accelerate again. So they just, there are no cars, I'll just keep going, it's in the middle of the night.
Counselor Greg?
Thank you, Warden, before supporting such a motion, I'd just like to hear from staff at this time. They probably have details already, uh, that they might be able to speak to, uh, provide us with a little bit of background regarding this instance. So I wonder if the director might have some detail to provide at this time.
I guess. That's the notion or the reason for the motion is to bring that information back to council. Um, so.
Then I'll just voice, um, I won't support the motion. Um, I come from municipality, we get inundated with requests. I was doing the fifty kilometer an hour zone within our municipality, you know, sound last night and got passed by vehicle. Ninety percent probability is between seventy-five and eighty-five kilometers an hour. We work, uh, with, uh, police in OPP in your jurisdiction. Uh, I totally empathize with your, um, with your scenario. I lost a, an extended family member, uh, from a T-bone collision in a fifty kilometer an hour zone, uh, including the child within her. Um, so it's not a lack of empathy, um, but the problem is pervasive. Uh, the noise is a nuisance, you can consult with Wasaga Beach, Won Sound, Flusherden, wherever the noise, uh, that's a different discussion. Uh, but we have to follow, we have to have policy that's applied across the county and, and not respond on, on ad hoc basis. Um, and we have policy in place, it's a county road, it's meant to move people in places and, and we have, you know, it's similar, uh, the purpose of the road is somewhat similar to, you know, you can't open a commercial entity in a residential zone or zoning bylaws. So I think we, it's very difficult, uh, when we have the speeding uh, comments and, and concerns, but we need to work with our, our OPP for enforcement because at the end of the day, it comes down to enforcement. Um, that's the only way to get compliance and, and hit people in the pocketbooks. Unfortunately, they, as my example last night shows, they just continue to speed in a forty or a fifty as well. So, um, those are my comments, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor DeBreen.
Thank you, Warden, and thank you to all who came and spent time and, and presented. The, the concerns obviously are the, the, the lack of respect and, and the inability to enforce twenty-four seven, peep, a truck running a stop sign. Um, those things that staff can address as far as visibility of the flashing light. I do support getting more information. I do know that after some data collection in the township of Southgate, Southgate Council, uh, passed a resolution to request the county to consider lowering the speed in the, in the village of Dundalk and the village of Holstein uh, to forty kilometers of an hour and it, it ultimately did. It doesn't, it doesn't eliminate the speeding, the speeding still occurs. But the penalty is more severe. So, um, I, I do support the, the, the motion to get more information, to have staff do some data collection along that route. And, um, and thank you for bringing the attend, bringing it, bringing it to the attention of council, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments, Counselor Mackey?
Sorry, Mr. Warden, I know you want to move on, but.
As, as Counselor Greg has, has indicated, during the last campaign knocking on a lot of doors, probably the number one issue I heard, whether it was a gravel road, whether it was a paved road, a county road, was the speed that certain individuals travel. Most, most travelers are very respective of the speed. You in your video had a number of Lamborghinis going through. I doubt that they're a residence of Gray County. Um, they probably traveled up here and there's likely a route that they've got on their maps to go and have, have fun. It is enforcement. If they're going through stop signs, a speed limit's not going to make a difference. So I guess my question is, um, I know the county has rules around what, uh, what the speed limit should be, um, based on the number of houses along a kilometer of road, the sightline and the condition of the road. Those policies are there for a reason, as was indicated, to move goods and services across the county. Almost every resident, irregardless of where they live, could come with an impassioned, uh, as you did, and concerns about a majority, a minority of people that are abusing our, our roads. So certainly enforcement is, is important and that's the only way to get to the bottom of it. Uh, the OPP are stretched. Um, municipalities do have the option of, of adding to their contracts if they want to increase the, uh, the supervision. But that's not a county. So I, I mean, I would be interested just to know that from the county perspective, transportation respective, are our rules, you know, being implemented? Are the speeds at Banks as they should be? Because, you know, as you get more and more houses, the speed limits sometimes need to be reevaluated. But we do have rules set by transportation that county council has all agreed to and we can't be, um, moving away from those every time we have a delegation, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Mackey, and my impatience to move on is not from a lack of empathy because I hear your presentation, I, I, a hundred percent, I, I can understand where you're coming from. But this debate that is unfolding here quickly is the debate we need to have when Counselor, when Director Hoy brings his report back to this council. So with that said, is there any further comments? Not looking over there. Counselor Apples?
Maybe Mr. Hoy can, uh, help us out when it comes to it. Maybe what we're doing is we're making the roads way too smooth and whatnot. Can we save a lot of money, Pat, and not bother doing that and put them back to gravel? I just, but I will support Mattress, Ms. Matrasov's motion that we need to do something here. Thank you.
Okay, so the motion is to bring a report back from staff. Counselor McQueen?
Be very brief, Mr. Warden, I've heard a number of complaints, um, not necessarily of people driving the road that normally drive it in a reasonable manner, but there has been a number of comments made my way of, of, um, exotic cars, uh, open roads. Um, I know my parents, uh, have a place on Grey Road thirty-one and particularly on a Friday night, it seems like a lot of movement occurs in a very fast, and I'll just leave it at that, but there seems to be that open roads that seems to be, and I don't, you can't legislate that, it's hard, but it does seem to be happening more and more. So and, and the unfortunate thing is, I think is mentioned here is, is, is on the video, uh, that may be at a higher level of enforcement and provincial wise as well because they seem to get up, there's individuals scenic up in this area and open roads and, uh, you know, leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to call the vote, a little in favor. That is carried. So a report will be brought back to council regarding this matter on that particular stretch of road. Uh, I can't say when, but I. Uh, I can't say when, but I would think that we will notify you, Mariana, when that report will come forward to this council. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, we have another delegation, Ian Duff is here is uh here from McDuffie. He is our uh, or McSweeney. Yeah, it's just been one of those days. Maybe we should vote on that, should it be McDuffie? I don't know. Anyway, I apologize, Ian.
All good.
Okay, so you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, I have a presentation that I'd like to just put up on the screen if that's okay. So what I'm here today to talk about is um, the county strategic plan, more more specifically. Um, a process to develop a strategic plan for the county. Um, and you folks, um, along with the senior management team. Are really the 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 focus point in terms of moving this process forward. So that's I'm going to talk about today. So I've got a quick introduction or sorry, a quick agenda, uh, I'll introduce who we are, a lot of you already know who we are, we've worked with many of you in the past. I'll go through the process and we'll talk about timelines and then answer any questions that you folks may have. So in terms of who we are, um, you may have dealt with with several of us in the past, we're working with um. With your active team right now and your senior leadership and folks such as yourselves to develop. Your master plan around economic development and tourism. Um, that's in play right now, we've also done quite a bit of work with you folks in the past. Um, so you may have seen some of our team members, we've worked with several of you member municipalities. Um, you know, going back, oh my gosh, many years. So it's nice to be back. What I want to highlight in this slide. Um, and and I don't have any video, so that presentation before me. I I feel kind of inept a little bit, I don't have any cool videos to show, it's just me talking, so I apologize for that. Um, but I want to receive to to the team, more importantly, you're going to see my face throughout this entire process. So I will be leading the strategic planning process um on our end. But I want to let everyone know that I'm I'm, it's not just me, I'm here with a team. Um, Nancy, Kevin and Erica are behind me, helping me get this together. Um, but you will see my face throughout the entire process. So today, the the main objective, I really just want to make sure that everyone around the table understands the process that we're going to be going through together. Um, and it's important that you buy into the process because um, as leaders in the county. This strategic plan is very people focused, so that for the the approach that we take. It's really to make sure that we're hearing from people, people such as yourselves. Um, the the corporation, Gray County, it's really only as strong as the people that are there, the assets that they they have in terms of the the physical horsepower. So it's important that you folks buy into the process, um, and that's why I'm really here today is to to let you know what we're doing. Um, and to make sure that you do understand um, your role in this this whole exercise. So I guess to start off, why why even do a strategic plan? Uh, the county has a lot on its plate. You're very busy, um, there's a lot of things in motion. You know, the plan itself is really about building on the foundation that that you already have. It's not looking at completely different directions and not looking at rebuilding things, it's really taking the foundation that you have and making the best of it. And moving forward in a way that really elevates the county as a corporation and really elevates the county in terms of the things that it can do. It allows you at the end of the day to be more strategic with your resources, so it helps to provide focus, helps to provide priorities. Um, and it helps you look at those things that are really important, so they don't slip away and and, you know, get lost in the shuffle. And at the end of the day, it provides the why. Why does the county do the things that it does? Um, what's important, why do we have to look at these things? That's we're going to uncover throughout the process. So at the end of the day, I want to be very clear about the approach that we're taking. This is the county's plan. So essentially, it's your plan, it's not my plan, it's not a con, it's not a consultant's plan, it's your plan. And I'll be blunt when I say I really don't care what's in your plan. But I really care that you care. It's paramount that you have your fingerprints all over this thing. And it's really important that you tell us what's important, so we can capture it and make sure that your plan. Um, really speaks to Gray County, the leadership, the guidance, um, and what's important. So we're really here to help you through a process. To make sure that you can express what's important and that your views are being heard. And that you can really, you know, tell us where the county needs to go in the future. So I am very serious when I say this. You are the most valued asset in the county. Um, the leaders, the people are on the table. You are the ones that are they're moving the yardsticks for the county, without you folks, the the county doesn't exist, you need people. So we really take a hands-on people approach to this, so you folks, the elected officials, along with your senior management team. This is about you, and we'll be focusing on that as we go through the process. At the end of the day, we have four steps that we want to go through. Um, some of this work is being done behind the scenes. Um, but once we get engaged with you folks, you'll be sort of the 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 main pin, the cotter pin that that's going to move this thing forward. So there is some preliminary work we've been doing behind the scenes. Um, we're going to work with you to identify some priorities. And we're also going to have a session in person on the ground. Where we're going to engage both council and your your senior leadership team in the same room at the same time to talk about, you know, what's important to everyone. And then start planning out some actions for the future, and then we're going to come back with an actual plan. So the first step. We put together communications plans, so we will be engaging the public through this. Um, just to let them know what what we're up to and to get their feedback on what's important to them. Um, we will be going through your your strategic documents, so we want to make sure that anything that you're working on or anything that's been talked about in the past, that we're not losing sight of that. Um, this isn't, as I mentioned earlier, it's not a complete rebuild, it's really taking what you have and building on it. So we don't, so the reason for those going through the strategic documents is we can do a solid review. So we don't lose sight of what's important already. So the phase two is that strategic document review, we really want to understand what the county does. What's important, what like, what are you guys really good at? What are the things that you focus on? Um, the approach that we take to this process is that we're all in public service. So you're really good at providing service to the public. You're more often than not outward looking, so you're looking into the community often to see, you know, what are the problems we can solve, what are the opportunities we can take advantage of? We're going to challenge you a little bit and ask you to focus internally as well. So what are the things that we need to do internally to make sure that we can become the best corporation possible? Um, and that sometimes is a little hard to do because a lot of times what you're looking at is is not how to. Really solve your own problems, but you're looking at solving your community's problems and that we get that. We're also going to put you to work a little bit, um, we've got a workbook that we want you folks to complete. Um, and we'll talk about that in the next slide, but it's really about. Forcing you to think about what are your top two priorities? Within this next term of council, what are the top two things the county needs to do? Or what are the top two things that's really important to you? Whether it be an opportunity or an issue that needs to be addressed, we're trying to narrow it down to your two most important priorities. So we've put together an online survey for um county council to 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 fill out. It's really just, it's a quick eight question survey. Um, well, actually, it's a four question survey that's done twice because we're looking for two opportunities. But what we want you to do is really tell us what's important to you. And the reason for the online survey is for you to gather your thoughts. Um, and really to articulate your thoughts on paper. Because the next step, we're going to ask you to stand up in front of your colleagues. Um, your like, your elected official colleagues, senior management team, and tell everyone. This is what's important to me, these are my two top issues, these are the things that the county needs to do. We're going to go through an active listening session where everyone around the table is going to have a chance to tell and to express what's important to them. The reason for that is I want you to be able to tell people what's important to you. But I also want you to listen to what's important to your colleagues, um, as we go through the planning process. Once we're done listening to everyone, we're going to go through an exercise of of solving problems, strategic planning. It's really a facilitated action planning session where we're going to identify some themes. Based on your priorities, and then we're going to look at any opportunities or actions that can make part of the strategic plan. That actual session is an in-person session that's going to happen on August twenty ninth. And then the last step is really putting it all together. Um, that's when we're going to come back with a strategic plan, it's going to have a four-year horizon, it's going to be strategic in nature, but it's really going to focus on what your priorities are. This isn't an operational review, um, it's not a work plan review, and the idea is not to give you a work plan for the county, but to give you a document that will help guide you. Um, you know, as you move forward with actions that talk about what the priorities are for the next term of council. It'll be short and tight. Um, we've learned over the years, the longer the document, the less people read it. So we're going to try to make it as tight and concise as possible and get to the point with what's important. Um, and again, the idea behind the strategic plan is really to focus on what's important for Gray County as a corporation. What are the things that needs to happen in the next four years? And as I, as I said earlier, and I can't emphasize it enough. You folks are on the council table, along with your senior management team. It is about you, it's about what you think, it's about what's important to you, it's about your priorities. Because you being the horsepower in the county. Give the county life and and make it the the corporation that it is, so that's why we're taking that focus. In terms of timelines, um, it's tight, it's really tight, um, we started in in mid-June. Um, and we're moving through the process rather quickly, we've already done interviews with all of your senior management team. So we've talked priorities with them, you folks are the next step, we're going to go out and reach out to you to get your priorities. Um, so that we can get all this stuff wrapped up and together and have a meaningful conversation and a meeting get together on August twenty ninth. Um, after the twenty ninth meeting, we'll we'll formulate things, put them together, and we'll start sharing drafts with you to make sure that everyone's happy with what, well. That you see the plan and that and you get the context of the plan and that everyone's happy with the plan. So in terms of next steps, so what's important going forward? In the next week or so, you're going to see um, an online survey that's sent to you. You'll have between seven and ten days to put your priorities on paper or to fill out the survey. Um, I'll take all that information back and myself and my team will go through it. And try to find where there's similarities, who has, you know, opportunities that are make the most sense in terms of grouping them together. Um, where's alignment? If there's things that you've put in to your survey that I don't understand, I will contact you directly. Um, and ask if we can talk about it and talk through it, and it's not for me to push you or to challenge you. It's just to make sure that when you articulate your your priorities. With your colleagues at the working session, that it's clear that everyone understands what they are, that's the only reason for the conversation. Um, as I said, the one-on-one interviews with um, the with county's S M T and and leadership team, they're almost done. And then after that, we're going to take everyone's ideas and actually put them together in some sort of a workbook, and that will be shared with you before the working session. I know I went through this rather quickly, um, and I didn't have any videos, but any questions?
Thanks, Ian. No, uh, the lack of videos was not, uh. Not a bad thing. Any questions, any questions? I think the process has been laid out very clearly here for us, uh, and as Ian indicated, it's going to be tight, but I think it's doable. I'm not seeing any questions, Ian, so uh, oh, Kim, go ahead.
Thanks, thanks so much for your presentation, Ian, and uh, it's been a great process so far where uh, everybody I think has had an opportunity to have some good. And challenging discussions, right? Um, I will also note for everyone, the the Wardens Forum is on Thursday, the seventh of September. And I'm really hopeful that uh, we'll have a great turnout um, from yourselves and the members of of you, each of your individual councils. Um, we've asked Ian to um, also be present at that meeting so that there'll be an opportunity for other members. Of um, each of our member municipalities councils to both hear about the the planning work, but also to uh. You know, get their questions answered and and provide any insights as well. So there are other things on that agenda too, but I did want to just um, note that while Ian was here with us this morning, so thanks.
Thank you, Kim. So, oh. Councilor DeBreen, sorry.
That's quite all right, Warden, thank you very much, just a quick question, at any point in time. I I I I'm kind of favoring it to the official plan process or zoning bylaw process, is is there any public engagement in this process? At all, or is this the internal working document uh, for the county?
Good question, Ian.
Uh, through you, Mr. Warden, that's an excellent question, counselor, there had, there, it is a very internally focused document. There is an opportunity for the public to provide input or to provide comments, um, we do have. Um, an online survey that's going out to them. Um, via your your online platform, so that there is an opportunity for them to provide input through this. But I, let's, let's be honest and and clear, it's nothing like um, a zoning bylaw. Process or an unofficial plan, it's definitely not that community intensive. Um, it's, it's really honing in on the corporation. Um, and and that's the focal point of what we're looking for, but that said, I completely understand where you're coming from. Um, you do want to hear what some of the council or some of your resident issues and priorities are. Um, but it it's a fine line we're trying to walk, we're not trying to address. The issues in the in the community like you would a community plan. This is more engaged with what does the corporation need to do?
Go ahead.
This is more the vision, and I really do appreciate there being some public engagement, I realize that it wouldn't be to to the level of an official plan, but thank you very much.
Uh, so after this meeting, there'll be a media re-release that goes out and talks about the process. And there's a webpage that's been set up that has the background information and some of the report links to the reports that um. Were shared uh, with McSweenes as as part of their review and the link there also for the survey. Uh, for the public, should they wash to uh, contribute their priorities, we'll be able to collect the information that way. And as well, um, Rob has has kindly uh volunteered to uh, you know. Take calls from folks who who don't have technology or who would be less comfortable in filling out an online survey. So he'll take those calls and transcribe the information, so I'm hoping that we get a a really good response from people, so thank you.
Excellent. Okay, well, thank you very much, Ian, for your presentation, we look forward to engagement and uh. The finished product.
Thank you very much, I look forward to meeting everyone and 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 really picking your brains as we go forward, so thank you for the opportunity.
Excellent, enjoy the rest of the day.
You too, thanks, everyone.
Okay, so uh, I don't see a report here from Scott Taylor, but uh. We are perilously close to lunch, but perhaps what I'll do is I'll ask uh, if there are any items in the consent agenda. That anyone would like removed for further discussion. Not seeing any, so I'll ask if someone would move that we adopt the consent agenda, Council Nielsen, seconded by Councilor Apples. All those in favor? That is carried. Wow, we're on a roll, so I'm hesitant to stop, but. I think lunch is here. And uh, we have a significant portion of business to deal with. Henceforth, so let's uh, let's uh, recess and we'll reconvene at, I don't know, what 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 is here for lunch? And. Food, Mr. Eccle says, so why don't we aim for quarter to one? And uh, if we can't meet that, we'll meet it as close as we can, so we'll reconvene at quarter to one. Thank you, gentlemen, online. Okay, we'll bring the meeting back to order, I see we have everybody back and our two uh, counselors online are back with us. So uh, items for direction and discussion, the first is the uh, motion regarding. Uh, an update on the annual general meeting of the Great Lakes and Saint Lawrence Cities Initiative. So Counselors Matrasov and Body ably represented us at that event. I'll maybe go to uh, Counselor Matrasov first, so Andrea. I'd mean to move her in second or first. I'd mean to move her in second or first. Moved by Counselor DeBreen, Counselor Nielsen. Thank you very much, Andrea.
Thank you, Warden. And uh, I requested that we have this information circulated in advance so that everybody could read the summary of the pieces. We're familiar with the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative. But what is nice to see in the updates there is that we're now up to two hundred and thirty members. And originally, when it first started, it was well below. And in fact, even just over the last four years, it's really grown, doubled actually in membership. So it's building its significance, and that really is crucial because um, when that many heads of council come from that many municipalities across both borders, um, it the the upper levels of government pay attention because there is something that resonates with more than one individual place, and it's a way in which we can problem solve. So I did feel that it was necessary for us to report back. Um, I really appreciated the company of of Counselor Body down to Chicago for that conference because one of the things we did was bring the Gray County resolution to it. And you will know when, if you recall back when we first approved as a council, that we would be able to uh, that we would submit that as a resolution. The wording did change, but the essence is still there. So the principle is still there that we want to remind the province that when it comes to things such as intra wat- intra basin water transfer, there is an agreement in place that was established, and it requires going back to that agreement and making the pitch to the partners about why something might need to be done in a certain way. What is absent from the resolution, the way that it was it was um, edited is specific references, as we had discussed here at Gray County Council, that we have an example in Ontario that we were concerned about, um, which is another member of the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative. But the real focus we had intended here at council was to to remind the province that this is an agreement that needs to be followed. And and I feel that that was brought forward. So it is very interesting when you look at the summary of the resolutions that were passed, um, how much activity there is in the Great Lakes area, um, in particular around our Georgian Bay. So uh, Gray County as well as um, tiny township, there's good representation about activity and also the archipelago. Uh, Reeve uh, Reeve Leverance of the archipelago, which is halfway up on the other side of of Georgian Bay, uh, and myself have been designated as co-leaders for a new regional group. So in Ontario, there are so many members that we have decided that it would make sense for us to work in more regional structures to be able to say what is important, what's something that's crossing our boundaries municipally that we could work on together with regards to the bay that we share. And so it's been divided up in Ontario and and ours is the largest group, so we're co-leading that one, which is all of the members that belong to the city's initiative in Gray County, Simcoe County, and the rest of Georgian Bay going up on that side. So with that, I will look forward to inviting everyone that's here present uh, to uh, to an in-person meeting for that regional group, that new regional group. Uh, I will be hosting it in the Town Blue Mountains, which I hope will be a good central location for people. And I don't have the the full agenda and itinerary. I want to make sure that it's something that's really worth your time coming in person. And we all sit here as a shared member here as Gray County as a member of the city's initiative. But there is value to the individual municipalities also joining. So we would like to be able to invite everyone to find out more and see how that can work. One of the the key focuses you'll see there in the summary about what the St. Lawrence and um, Great Lakes Cities Initiative does is one of the focuses is coastal resilience, for example. And I am sure that the Town Blue Mountains is not the only one that is still fighting frag mighties. And we have it on our area of scientific and national national interest. Um, so it is paramount to us that we keep management. And here we are at a municipal level making choices because of budgets. We need that federal dollar to travel down into our municipal pockets so that we can actually identify how that money could help. And um, as the federal government has been making promises along the way about devoting funds that will help along with the the Canada Water Agency, things like our source water, making sure that 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 our bay continues to be uh, healthy water from which we can draw to drink. Um, these are all important, but rather what we need is we need the financial support from the federal level, but we need the problem solving right here on our local level. So that's part of the advocacy that we do with the initiative. So with that, um, I I welcome any questions that may come from the material here, but I would like to offer the floor over to my counterpart, uh, Counselor Body.
How the heck do I follow that? Um, in in a lot of respect to Andrea here because uh, um, she's recognized by this group for for the stuff that she's been working on. Twentieth year of the group started by uh, Richard M., I think, Daley. The second Richard Daley, Mayor of Chicago, phoned David Miller from Toronto, the two largest cities in the Great Lakes and said, we need to do stuff, something to stop water from being taken from the Great Lakes and piped out. So there is the basic building block this organization twenty years ago that we are talking about with our uh, our uh, motion um, from Gray County is stopping moving water from watersheds. Um, there's a lot of uh, municipalities more on the state side that still have lead pipes that they're cleaning up, trying to have, you know, we all know about uh, Lansing, Michigan, um, Lansing, yeah. Flint, uh, and there's others that are like that, and we're in better shape than that. But we're dealing with uh, with climate change. We're dealing with shore erosion. We're dealing with uh, continuing to protect the water, making sure that it's clean going back out. So it's a really good organization to get the attention of provinces and the federal government. And um, it was two days of pretty intensive uh, all-day-long sessions. Uh, a lot of it was talking about climate change. Now that you've got a plan, how do you implement it? How do you get it out? How do you draw your community in? Aim for the mushy middle, it's, you know. There there's people that are uh, totally against climate change, and you're not going to change them. There is people that are totally recognizing that climate change is important. You're not going to change them. You can probably never quite do enough. But there's a lot of people that are skeptical, that are uh, uh, interested but not engaged. How do you get them engaged? How do you move them uh, over is really what we discussed. So very good conference next year in Montreal. Um, hoping to return, hoping to see Georgian Bluffs and Meaford being shoreline uh, lower tiers there as well and uh, uh, probably Nawa Shingamang hopefully from uh, from the Cape there. So yeah, good organization to be involved with, uh, learned a lot and um, and we're well, we are very well represented.
Excellent. Well, thank you from both of you. Any questions? Counselor Greg.
Thanks, and through you, just a quick one. Uh, with the proliferation of microplastics in the environment now, and it's in our apparel and our footwear, and now you see it um, as more and more concentrated in tires. Um, is there, was there any discussion on capturing devices for washing machines? And when there are steps that we can take to protect uh, from microplastics in the Great Lakes?
Thank you. Through you, the Warden. Yes, there was definitely lots of lots of ongoing conversation about that. And there are organizations that are already with the technology, and they've got it. You know, we know Georgian Bay forever, for example, works, you know, and tries to advocate for that. So those are exactly the kinds of things that the the federal dollars should be able to help us all support so that we can just roll that program right at right across, so it doesn't matter where you live, but that you can participate. But also on the federal level is changing the regulation to to make the appliances comply before they even arrive in the in the residence home. So that that's another advocacy issue. The other one that was related to it is the PFAS is all the chemicals that remain in the water, and that was coming loud and strong from from the contingency in Quebec as well to, you know, to continue to work on that because they just don't go away either.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Eccles.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Warden, to probably to Andrea here. You you mentioned about frag mighties and being a problem. Um, but are we just stopping at frag mighties? Because there's certainly an uh, an overgrowth of giant hogweed. Um, some little white flower that seems to be on every county road. Wild chirp, oh, yes, those ones. Um, I don't know whether, yeah, how much advancement are we making on those invasives plant by?
Thank you. Through you, the Warden. The reason and frag mighties is just an example, but the reason why it comes up frequently within the context of this conversation is because it threatens the shorelines and it threatens any of our watersheds, any any of our water bodies within our watersheds. I drive by way back up on the top of the mountain. I drive by marshes where I can see frag mighties. So and that trickles down. So we recognize the membership, for example, is not exclusive to only member municipalities that have shoreline. Anyone can participate who's within our Great Lakes watershed basin because those kind of issues start at the top and they have ramifications all the way down. But the reason why the others such as wild chirp, and it's been a horrible year, wild chirp is everywhere this year. And some of the others is it's not specifically attacking the wet the wetlands and and the shoreline. So in this particular context, that's the focus, but that's not to say that we aren't working on that on the agricultural uh, threat front. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. The next item is correspondence from the Beth Ezekiel Synagogue related regarding a uh, correspondence from them. Someone care to receive that? Counselor Greg, seconded by Counselor Nielsen. And just in response to that correspondence, a statement from the Warden's Office was crafted, and I'll just read it. At Gray County, we believe there is strength in the diversity of our community. Diversity can mean many things. Our culture, our identity and beliefs, including not limited to ethnicity, race, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, age and ability. We also recognize everyone brings unique experiences, values and contributions which add value to our community. By embracing inclusivity and promoting understanding, we can create a community that is strong, welcoming and willing to learn. When we are intolerant of those who are different from us and unwilling to learn, we create an environment that is divisive and unwelcoming and even hateful. Let's challenge discrimination and hate when we see it and instead choose to learn from each other, respect each other and accept each other for who we are. As Warden, I challenge everyone to participate in events, workshops and initiatives that promote diversity and celebrate cultures and beliefs that differ from your own. Listen with empathy, challenge your own assumptions and engage in thoughtful conversations. There are already great resources in our community such as Gray Bruce Pride, welcoming Gray Bruce and the Gray Bruce Local Immigration Partnership. I encourage you to seek them out. I hope that representatives of the these organizations will attend a Community Services Committee meeting or County Council to help us understand how our services could be improved to be more welcoming. As Winston Churchill once said, diversity is the one true thing we all have in common. Celebrate it every day. Let's respect each other and celebrate the diversity of our community to make Gray County a place where all voices are valued and everyone feels welcome. And as a final thought, your mother was right. If you can't say anything nice, don't say anything at all. Be kind. So with that, are there any comments, questions related to the correspondence? Not seeing any. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item, transition to new electronic agenda management software, E-Scribe. Sarah is going to uh, give a brief description of the report. Sarah, welcome. We need a mover in second. Counselor Patterson, Counselor McKay.
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Warden and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this afternoon. I am excited to bring to you an update on the county's transition to E-Scribe on behalf of the Clerk's Department. Um, endorsed through the twenty twenty-three budget process. Um, we are excited to share that we have successfully awarded the contract to E-Scribe for the county's electronic agenda and report management software. And we are currently in the process of configuring the software with them with a anticipated launch date of uh, within the September meeting cycles. Um, this report uh, just kind of reiterates and provides some background to that process and speaks to some of the uh, supports and resources that will be offered to meeting stakeholders as we transition to the new software. Um, I have nothing further to share than what is outlined in the reports, but I would be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Sarah. Are there any questions? Not seeing any. I'll call the que- oh, Counselor Carlton, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a question for those of us already using E-Scribe. How is this going to interact? Are we going to have to be changing accounts? Or is it going to automatically populate our meeting agendas with all meetings from both?
Uh, through you, Mr. Warden. Thank you for the question. It is my understanding that you will have different profiles on E-Scribe that you'll use uh, to access your different municipal sites. Uh, so you'll use your Gray County email address to access the Gray County site and your local tier to access your um, local municipality, but the app will, I believe, stay the same. So it'll just be another login for you to manage, unfortunately.
So I would anticipate the IT department will be busy with me, anyway. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Moving on, the next is a report regarding capital project status update. I will ask for a mover, Counselor Eccles, seconded by Counselor DeBreen. Thank you, and Mary Lou will give us the update. Mary Lou.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So this report is to provide a corporate update on capital projects that were approved in the uh, twenty twenty-three budget. There are a couple additions that were uh, unbudgeted projects. It's a high-level summary. So I'm not obviously going to go through all two hundred and nine projects. The majority are green. Uh, we have thirty-one that were yellow and sixteen that were red, and that's based on the end of May. So just to to give you a little idea, so a green project is on track as well as it came in on budget. Um, so on track meaning when we anticipated we would be working on the project when it would get awarded. Yellow, um, there's there's something that's gone slightly off track, but not completely. So it could be that it's not on track budget-wise or not on track time-wise or have minor issues. And a red project is it's off track with uh, issues where it's either significantly over budget. It's been deferred or canceled. Uh, or in some of the cases, I know that um, the departments that have supply chain issues such as uh, Anne Marie with their makeup units, uh, Pat and Kevin with vehicles and equipment. Um, not that won't either, that they ordered in twenty twenty-two and didn't arrive till twenty twenty-three or ordering in twenty twenty-three. And now ordering maybe ended already for twenty twenty-four. So it through no fault of their own, those projects would show up as red. I'd like to thank the finance staff and all the staff in the departments for their work on collaborating on this report. Uh, there's been a lot of back and forth on, you know, what the status is, when, you know, what are your timelines? This is the first report we've brought of this nature. Historically, we bring you a combined capital and operating financial report. And we decided that we would bring capital because we don't talk about capital in the same manner in those high-level financial reports where we're talking about where we think we're going to be at year end. So this gives you an idea if somebody asked you about a particular project, you know, where we were um, at the end of May, whether it's on track, whether we're not moving forward with it this year, et cetera. So just providing a better uh, level of detail for you as to what um, the departments are doing. So we've provided information in the report about our purchasing limits. So departments work closely with procurement's team. So anything up to five thousand dollars can be a direct purchase in formal quotes up to ten thousand. A request for quotes can be ten to seventy-five thousand. A request for tender is over seventy-five. And we could issue a request for a proposal or an RFP for any dollar amount. Uh, the lengthy spreadsheet that we've got attached as a link provides a lot of information. It provides the the detail of what the project's called, the status of it. If we knew the the date that it was being awarded or what our estimate was, estimated when we'd complete the project. estimated when we'd complete the project, what the budget was. So the total that was either committed, so if it had been awarded, we knew the commitment number or what we had spent to date. And there are some projects in that that are in capital that maybe at some point will become an operating budget item. And I'll point to Anne Marie's budget where we have common area painting. So basically it's to do the common areas of the apartment buildings. So it's not within your unit. It's hallways, et cetera. We draw upon that and so they have a pool of money and they can draw down on it throughout the year. So it doesn't, when they do the budget, they don't specify that, oh, I'm going to do the hallway at the high rise, the hallway at the low rise and the building at Chatsworth, things like that. Talking about the project status, so that's your quick reference, whether it's green, yellow, red, we chose to go with like a traffic signal. And if departments or staff in our department had any comments that would help you understand where the project was at. So for example, a green project, as I've mentioned, on track, on time on budget. One example is that seven pulverized and paved rehab. And you'll see throughout, obviously, most of the projects are green at this point in the year. So that either means that they're well out in the procurement process, as is a lot of the transportation projects, or they're budgeted to occur later in the year. And for a yellow project, when I've said that there's something that's off track, one would be an example, the Gray Roots Flat Roof Replacement. It's over budget by $48,821. That was approved in a report. The archaeological mass management plan, it's going to be reissued in the fall. And paramedic services stretchers were almost 16,000 over budget and that was being handled through savings in other in another budget line. So another project came into budget and that's what's funding the shortfall. Projects that are red. I've mentioned supply chain things, so like equipment, vehicles. Patrol D. Obviously, Pat can't build a patrol D if he doesn't have land. So through no fault of his, that's sitting as a red. Pat's also going to speak about the Clarksburg fuel tank removal following my report. It comes as a red because it's over budget and that's the, I'd say the the great unknown when you're dealing with something underground, you don't know what's there. And from an insurance point of view, because that's part of my portfolio, that is the last underground fuel tank of which I'm very grateful because we will no longer be disclosing that on our insurance renewals. So that just gives you a high level overview and I say there's 209 projects. We're a big operation. And we're going to bring a next report, I anticipate the end of September, just to give you an update as we've gone further in the year. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Are there any questions? Not seeing any? All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much, Mary Lou. Moving on, we have an addendum here to the Meaford Union Center subdivision. And it's a final report and Hiba is here to present that report. Welcome, Hiba.
There you go. Hello. Good afternoon, everyone.
Hold on, I apologize for interrupting. I need a mover and secondary. I was doing so good for the whole meeting. I don't know what happened. Counselor Deckard and Counselor Nielsen. No, that's all right. Oh, well, you need to if you're if you need water, holy, well, yeah, we will. You're not going to be there that long, trust me, okay? But stay hydrated, absolutely. No, no, it's, yeah, Scott. Anyway, Hiba, welcome. Proceed.
Thank you for having me. I'm here to present on the Meaford Union Center subdivision, an addendum to report PDR CW 1821. The file number is 42T 202105. The civic address is 324 Union Street and the geographic township of Meaford, now in the municipality of Meaford. The subject lands are located within the southwest corner of the primary settlement area in Meaford. The property has access off of the, off of Union Street to the east and Center Street to the west. The property currently has no structures on site and is currently vacant. And it's surrounded by primarily residential development and vacant lands. The proposed plan of subdivision, and I'll be flipping between this one and the next slide, just so that everybody can see the visual of the proposed plan of subdivision. But the proposed plan of subdivision is, will include 83 dwelling units, a stormwater management block, a special exemption block which is located. I'm not sure if I have a cursor, but just it's block 69 on the east, northeast corner. This is a special, the special exemption block is a remnant block. It's a landlocked block that could not be included into the development. It does not have any street frontage currently, but conditions in the draft approval have are have been put in place to ensure that access to this block is provided through an easement and that future development in the area does include this block, takes into consideration this block. There, the subdivision will also be providing an environmental protection block that was required by Gray Sobble Conservation Authority. One public street that connects to Center Point, Center Union, sorry, Center Street and Union Street. And one condominium road that loops through the subdivision. The subdivision is on full municipal services. I've mentioned the subdivision will include an internal condominium road and will connect to the future public road, which is Street A. They are in the primary settlement area and a zoning bylaw amendment application was submitted to the municipality of Meaford. And it was approved by the municipality on June 12, 2023. However, the zoning is conditioned on the approval of this draft plan. So in terms of just comments received, this is a brief summary of some of the comments and concerns perceived. So there were concerns related to the process that was undertaken from, from members of the public. So we did identify that the requirements of the planning act were followed and residents were notified within 120 meters of the site and a public meeting was held on October 4, 2021. There were concerns related to stormwater and servicing. Technical studies were provided as part of the subdivision. Peer reviews were conducted and there were no identified concerns related to stormwater and servicing. The subdivision currently has no allocation for servicing, so an environmental impact assessment for the wastewater. Your water wastewater treatment plant is being undertaken. So municipal staff at municipal level are aware of the subdivision are have the units in consideration in their numbers, but have not allocated any servicing that will happen at the time of site plan agreement. There was concern about lack of green space from the public. However, municipality of Meaford did not identify this as an area or identified this as a site of where they'd like to locate a public park. There is a public park being considered within 300 meters of this site. Time and impact of construction, there were concerns related to phasing and when construction will be occurring. So phasing for this development has not been determined yet. And some of the issues related to access to the site during construction can be dealt with through site plan agreement. Impacts to traffic generated and minimal sidewalks. So again, studies were submitted to support this development. An addendum was submitted after public concerns were identified. Staff did not find any concerns with, with the traffic that's going to be generated and it was it was determined that will be minimal impacts from this, the site on traffic. In terms of sidewalks, the public road will have sidewalks on each side and the condominium road will have a sidewalk on one side of the road. There were concerns regarding density, height and lot coverage. So this does meet the county requirement for density. No other commenting agencies identified density as a concern. And there were no amendments to the zoning related to a lot of coverage or, or height. Concerns over site layout and access to a budding streets. So one of the concerns here was related to the location of the public road. Unfortunately, the way that the site is laid out, there are very limited areas where the public road could be placed. So they had to essentially place it where it is currently being proposed. And then the last concerns were related to construction materials. This is outside the scope of the zoning bylaw and draft plan approvals, as long as they're adhering to the building code. That would, that would be fine. In terms of planning analysis, technical reports were completed, including staff and peer reviews of all technical reports. The proposed development is within a primary settlement area, which is identified in the county and municipal official plan. The recommended draft conditions address all of the municipal and agency comments and go on to address some of the public concerns that were identified. With the recommended draft conditions provided, the county staff are of the opinion that the proposed plan of subdivision does have regard for the planning act, the PPS and is and conforms to the Gray County and municipal official plan. So we are recommending that the report PDR CW 1821 be received that all written and oral submissions received on this subdivision. All the comments and concerns that were received were taken into consideration when providing this recommendation. And we recommend that the county, Gray County Committee of Hall approves this plan of subdivision subject to the draft plan approval. And I also wanted to mention that I have Colin Travis here with the applicant consultant to help answer any questions.
Thank you, Hiba. Very detailed report. Any questions from council? Seeing no questions, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Hiba. Excellent. You didn't even need your water. Good for you. So our, our final report is regarding the Clarksburg Depot project update and it was alluded to by Mary Lou there a few minutes ago. Pat is going to speak about the remaining removal of the two underground tanks that are still the last two in the county. The, the county owns. I'm sure there's a lot more across the county. So Pat, welcome. Come on ahead and speak. So I need a mover and secondary. Almost caught me. Counselor McKay, Counselor McQueen. Thank you. Pat, welcome.
Yeah, Mary Lou stole my thunder there. Ever since we did that truck roll off video, she's trying to up our presentations. Because no one wants to see pages of numbers, right? So she used anything to give some good news. Anyway. So, but back to this report here. Yeah. So as we said, ultimately, a slightly pricey good news story about our new tanks, above ground tanks, Clarksburg. So they were 30 year old tanks. And originally we had 150,000 in the budget. Now we had put it off for a year. So when I look back at that, we put it off because of supply issues like everything else on earth, it seems. We probably should have jumped up that budget at that time because if you can't get the tanks, obviously, when they do finally become available, they're probably going to be a lot more than you thought they were going to be. That was an estimate from a contractor at that point who did that type of work. So we probably, we're probably a little low with our budget figure to begin with. But anyway, it came in over budget and we were fine with it because you know, you kind of have to get it done. And we had made some improvements during construction. So before we had, you know, like you might see in a gas station, just a concrete island, like the raised island. But we didn't, we had asphalt kind of where the truck would sit, which is kind of a more permeable surface. It was kind of recommended by our contractor. The full asphalt, the full concrete imperial pad is probably better. So we've kind of brought, we brought that in during construction. We put a bunch more bollards around. If you ever see it, you know, you'd have to be very determined to hit it. Somebody did last year when we didn't have as many bollards, like we still have some bollards, but now there's a ton of them. So, you know, we think it's just a better setup and we worked with kind of our guys in the patrol to make sure that it was kind of, because Clarksburg isn't a huge yard. We, you know, we wanted, we moved the pad slightly to make it less maybe in the way. So we kind of started our work and we were fine with that. We knew there'd be a little bit of overruns there and then we got it in some contamination. Now there was no leaks in the tanks because we always, you know, we're always monitoring our fuel usage to make sure your balance, your stuff balances. But basically just the 30 years of, you know, the odd bit of spillage here and there that nobody ever kind of addressed. So it kind of, the leak seemed to, or the contamination got into kind of like a sand scene between, you know, some clay because the clay is kind of impermeable too. Or at least delayed. So we ended up following the sand scene because it, you know, it's just one of those things. We wanted to clean the site up. The last thing we need is to leave a bunch of contaminated stuff there. It's not that far from other water sources. We got GM Blue Plan onboard to, to help us with the project and we basically followed this kind of contamination seam to the end. Which luckily didn't get into the right of way or into our road and didn't go towards any other, you know, bodies of water, anything like that. So it basically was contained in our site. We added a few other things in there while we had the asphalt cut out and everything. There was a pipe that we had in one of our storm systems that was probably not as good as we thought. So we replaced it while we had everything dug up. So we did throw a few other jobs in there while we had it open. And then we we kind of limited our, our, because we ended up digging a lot deeper than we thought. We had granted our A as a quantity. We ended up putting more B in like the beefier and cheaper quantity that even though it was all extra costs anyway. But then we kind of only repaired with the asphalt areas we had dug up. So we had some other, there's some other areas that we were going to put in the tender, we had in the tender to improve some of the asphalt around the dome and such. But just because of the overrun, we've decided to put that next year because next year we're doing Gray Road 40 rate in front of the depot. So we're going to put some paving, extra paving into that contract. So we have our overrun of 217 from our original budget doing 17,000 and we're looking to get it from the Transportation Services General Reserve. And as I said, the key is kind of that it's a clean site and it is our last underground tank.
Thank you, Pat. That's a long way to say that that's the last two underground tanks. But nonetheless, thank you very much. Any questions from council? Counselor McKay. Mackey, sorry. I was that close to getting through the meeting. Sorry. Sorry, Scott. Counselor Mackey.
Appreciate your effort, Mr. Warden. Pat, this red flag, I'm glad that Mary Lou, you know, gave us the green, yellow and red and this certainly showed up as a red. So if the tanks didn't leak, how many gallons of fuel had to be? It, it's manual air that has caused this. How many gallons over the years would have to be spilt to equate to a cleanup of this magnitude? Like, we're not talking a few drips out of the nozzle. This has to be a fair amount of material. And how are we, even though we're not having underground tanks, that wasn't the cause here. How are we mitigating it in other sites? So we don't have this type of cleanup again.
Through you, I believe there was also a kind of a leak where kind of in the filling nozzle, like, you know, when the, when the contractor comes to fill our fuel tank. So there was kind of a leak there too. Which I guess by the time your tank gets full, maybe you're kind of missing out on that quality, quantity. So I mean, I don't think it's, it's not like guys are going in there crazy or anything, I think, but I don't, I don't think it takes, it wouldn't take many spills probably to seep into the ground and do damage. So it's hard for me to kind of pinpoint what that would be. Obviously, all our guys go, and I remember I had the training kind of when I started at the county, like fuel training, filling fuel training, right? And it, and I remember the time going, why, what am I, why am I taking, I've been filling a car since I was 16, you know, but there is a lot of kind of advice in there on how, how to, we never did it at one time, but now we, everyone goes through the training on just being careful, reporting anything the moment it happens, as opposed to just kind of wandering away and letting it evaporate and leak and no one notices. So it's hard for me to pinpoint how much that is over 30 years. But obviously it's something we're trying to prevent at every chance we get.
So we can be confident that nobody's jamming the cap into the hose handle anymore and just walking away, right? Excellent. Not that that ever happened in the past, but any other questions? Counselor Mattressovs.
Thank you through you, the warden. Just a question to understand the investment that we put into this one. What would be the nearest depot where they, where fuel could be obtained if this weren't here in this part of Gray County? Significant. Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you.
Any other questions? Call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Pat. We have no other business. Is there any notice of motion? Not seeing any? Someone care to move adjournment? Counselor Eccles. Counselor Mattressovs. All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.